Call this to order.
Yeah, that's right.
Regardless.
I'm ready. All right. I guess we say good morning, everyone that are here. We call this February 16th meeting to order at this time. We're not going to take any public comment. I guess we could go on to invocation, though.
Sure.
I think that'd be appropriate. Slay, if you don't mind.
I'll be glad to. Let's pray. Father, thank you for giving us safety to get here this morning. Thank you, Lord, that we could meet together and accomplish a few things this morning. Lord, I pray that you'll continue to protect our community, provide for us, and keep us safe. Thank you, Lord, that we avoided so much of the worst of this weather. And Father, I just pray that as we look to you, as we think about how you have protected us, Lord, we'll be grateful. Give these men the wisdom they need this morning in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. All right. Do I have a motion to approve all business?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Motion to approve all business by Mr. Cross, second by Ms. Calhoun. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And consent agenda to have a...
I'm making motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion by Brad to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Daniel. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, what just happened there was the minutes of February 1 was approved, and by approving the consent agenda, you have approved the claims docket as a part of that. And so those two matters were probably the most pressing matters that we have. Steve, Jay, can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. One idea that we have this morning is to perhaps take care of a couple of very preliminary matters. You're not going to be actually taking action on anything, but to go ahead and take action that would not require Renee to reset several matters that she has set for a date certain. And so with y'all's permission, I'd like to walk you through, under Renee's section, a couple of things that I think need to be handled. I say Renee's section, they're actually under me, but they're community development matters. If it's okay with everybody, I would like for us to, under my section, which is Section 10 of the agenda, there are three public hearings that are to be set for the 25th, which is the work session, at nine o'clock. Each of those three are to be set on the 25th at nine, so they can be taken together. Items A, B, and C, under my section, that will allow Renee then to go on and have those hearings on the 25th as scheduled. If everybody's okay with that, I'd like to do that.
I'm fine.
I'll make a motion to set the A, B, and C to February 25th.
Okay, motion by Brad to set these public hearings, A, B, and C. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second is Cross. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. But go ahead.
Yes, I have a discussion.
Okay.
Would Craig read which ones? I have one that's in LaBoucheois.
It isn't.
But I had already decided that we would tape it for a later time, and I want to make sure that one is not set.
Steve, let me read them out to you, the addresses. So one of them is 226 Tudor Circle. I don't believe that's it. 81543 South, and then 563 Sand Hill Road.
And I don't think that's in LaBoucheois. Does it have a name with it?
Yes, sir. So one of them is Sharon Page. One of them is Robbie Munn, and one of them is Mabel Davis Estate.
Okay, I'm good. I'm good.
All right.
In fact, they all actually say nuisance properties, Steve.
Oh, okay. All right. Good. Good.
I didn't pick up.
That's not where I'm at.
Okay. All right, so you're okay then?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Items, under my section, gentlemen, you'll see four public hearings that were scheduled for today. How I would like to handle those is to ask Renee to restart the process on each of those, because we're not going to be able to conduct any public hearings today, and we don't really have a good, fair, open way to delay either opening the public hearing or setting it on a different day, because then nobody would know. The public hearing tells them to be here today at this time. So I would like to request that items D, E, F, and G, we ask Renee to remove these from the agenda and to restart the process on these at no cost to the applicant.
When you say restart, can't they just do it for, say, the 25th?
Well, no, sir. She's going to have to actually give public notice again and run it in the newspaper.
Really?
Yes, sir. And that way, it tells the public when to come and to object to these. So we need to go back through the process. It's probably about a 30-day delay on each of these, but it's unavoidable. And so I would ask that with just... Actually, all I need is you guys to express to me your understanding that we're going to have to reset all of those. Okay?
Okay. So we don't need to take that?
There's nothing to do. There's nothing to do.
All right, well, that's what we need to do, yeah.
You won't see those again on the 25th. You'll have to see those at some point in March, I would anticipate.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I think we do it, yeah, for their sake, as soon as possible.
I'm dealing with that. That was my concern, almost what I was bringing up earlier. That's what I think we should do.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And by the way, Steve, on your LaBoucheois situation, I actually spoke to the attorney for the gentleman that is wanting to build the metal house and explained to her that before we could really take any action or consider anything about that, that she was going to have to help her applicant understand the restrictive covenants that are in place. There's actually covenants in place that does not allow a metal structure to be built in LaBoucheois. That's not the county regulation now. That's a restrictive covenant that was signed by all of the property owners back years ago. And so she expressed her understanding about that, and the last indication I had was that they were going to have to work to try to get all the signatures before they could even come to us.
Okay, good. Good. This had come up to me about a week ago, and we were trying to, you know, work through it, and then this weather hit. But okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right. Gentlemen, there is... There are, let's see. One, two, three, four, five items under my section for today that have to do with the City of Flowood bond refunding request or process. If... I don't know whether there is any interest whatsoever in dealing with this. There is a timeframe that the City of Flowood is working under in order to be able to meet some deadlines that will allow them to qualify for the refinancing that they have in place. If the board is of a mind to consider this, I've got some figures and some calculations that have been provided to me by Flowood's Bond Council that provides the savings to Rankin County if we participate in this process and it's allowed to go forward. Are y'all interested in hearing that information?
As long as it's not costing us money or extending our time.
Okay. It is not costing any money to Rankin County. In fact, it is saving Rankin County on the order of about $350,000 over the remaining time to be paid out under the bonds as originally agreed.
I agree with it.
The only hesitation... I don't have a hesitation. The only conditions that I would like to see us consider, if the board is of a mind to move forward and authorize all of this, is that it's contingent upon Flowood's alderman also approving it, which has to happen, I believe, tonight if they are able to meet. I assume they'll be doing what we're doing, which is kind of cobbling together as many as they can, and I anticipate that they're going to approve it. But I would like for y'all's action to be contingent upon Flowood approving it, obviously. And the other condition that I would like to see you consider is that it's clear that there is no cost to Rankin County for any of this process. No issuance costs, no bond council fees, and no fees associated with your legal representation in this matter. All of that has to be comped. Are y'all okay with that?
I'm fine, as long as it's not costing us anything.
Yeah.
We gain.
So those would be the two conditions. If the board is of a mind to move forward, I'm going to suggest that we authorize and adopt items H, I, J, K, and L. Those can all be done as one motion to approve items H, I, J, K, and L and authorizing Jared to affix the board president's signature to any documents associated with the bond refunding.
Hey, Craig?
Yes, sir.
Is this all four of them together?
Yeah. So you've got Dogwood Promenade. You've got Dogwood Festival. You've got Lakeland Commons, and you've got Market Street. Each of those are being refunded.
So, you know, we did different structure on some of those.
Yes, sir.
As far as village goes.
Yes. And none of the... None of the underlying county obligations are being changed.
Okay.
All of those are staying exactly what they are. It's 25.2 mills on two of them, and I believe 50% Jay is how it was structured in the other two. But those obligations are exactly the same.
What is the deadline? I mean, what's the end of bond?
28.
Is that what it was initially?
I believe it is, Jay. I'm almost 100% sure that the timeframes are remaining exactly the same. Yeah, one of these, I'm told, and of course Keith looked at it a little closer because he's had a document that I didn't have access to, but it looks like one of them's going to actually pay out a year ahead.
That's what I was thinking. I didn't think they were all together, so that... Yeah.
We're doing all four of them?
Yeah, but they weren't. They didn't all mature.
They're not all identical.
That's right.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So you've got... Just, for instance, I've got two of them here in front of me. Lakeland Commons, Jay. The current debt obligation that the county would be obligated for, I'm talking about over the life of the remaining term now. I'm not giving you an annual figure here. This is the life of the remaining term, $460,322. After the refunding, the county's total obligation on Lakeland Commons is $340,880. That's a savings of over $120,000, just on Lakeland Commons. So over an eight-year period, that's 15 grand a year just on that one bond.
I would just say Dogwood would be rolling off before that, since that was the first one we did.
Yeah, I'm thinking in the prior refunding, Jay, and I'm thinking back to 2015. This is off the top of my head. The amortization was changed during that refunding, and it was extended out to 28. So you're on the hook for these timeframes already. It's not something that this board, literally this board, did.
This is Steve. I'm good.
Jay, does that answer your questions?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good. I was just curious when they were ended.
I was too, because I knew Dogwood was done back before my time.
That's correct.
And I see it's all been consolidated kind of together.
That's correct. The repayment term on both of the Dogwoods was extended in 2015.
Okay. All right. Everybody good? We need a motion to approve this?
Yes, sir.
I need... Do I have a motion to approve this? I guess you'd call it the...
Yes, so moved.
Refinancing.
That says items that slightly listed out.
Right. All right. Motion approved by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay. I believe that everything else under my section, it can wait until the work session. I invite anyone who's got access to their agenda to look through there and see if there's anything else you want to pick off and go ahead and take care of today. If it would help Jay and Steve, I can sort of quickly give a thumbnail sketch of what's left under my section that we could go ahead and pick off if y'all want to. The first one, item M, is the agreement on the Illinois Central Railway Company closing. This is our Star Road Air Gas...
Andrew Jackson.
Andrew Jackson Circle Improvement Project, Safety Improvement Project. This is simply executing a crossing agreement that has been fully reviewed and is in good shape. It's a crossing agreement that basically obligates the county to spend about 75 grand to do some small asphalt work leading up to railroad crossings, where the railroad and MDOT spend about a million and a half to put in all the safety features around that. So if everybody's okay, I'd like to go ahead and pick that one off and get those documents turned back around to DOT.
Everybody okay with that?
Is that all?
Huh? Oh, is that... You got another one you want to bring up?
Hey, the only one I wanted to maybe mention on here, if y'all got your stuff in front of you, is that item Q on the ambulance side of that. These guys need that help in order to change up part of the response side during this pandemic to get trucks available. It was a portion of... In the contract that we have originally, it says that we require advanced life support stuff on all of our trucks, and it has the specific wording of paramedic. The wording change would be allowing still advanced life support, but it would add an additional qualified person that's considered an advanced EMT. The only difference in an advanced EMT and a paramedic is the ability to move narcotics. That's the only difference. So a paramedic can use more narcotics than an advanced EMT can. They can still do all the same advanced life-saving stuff that's there. This would allow them to put more trucks available when they get hung up at the hospitals. So they've got more advanced EMTs than they have paramedics. So when they, for example, they have seven trucks hung up in the city of Jackson at hospitals and can't get crews available, they can put these other additional advanced life support. Again, the two common ways of transport are basic life support and advanced life support. We want advanced life support in all of our trucks in Rankin County. This still allows that to happen. This just allows an advanced EMT to be on those trucks. So compared not having a truck and having this truck available, it's the right thing to do. So I'd like to consider item Q on everyone's agenda list as well.
Well, okay. Do you... Don't we need to... You want to go ahead and go over them, but you want to take them individually, correct?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, what about... Let me ask you this. Reading is, what about O? Would that's... Is that going to speed the Cleary Fire District, I guess, up if we go ahead and approve it today?
Yes, sir. Let me walk... I want to walk through.
Okay.
Steve.
Yeah, go ahead.
Steve and Jay, are y'all... Are y'all able to read these agenda items yourself? Do you have those handy?
Negative.
Okay.
I do not.
Okay. Let me... Just in case there's any question, I wanted to give a little more information on what Daniel just talked about with respect to the ambulance agreement. What you're being asked to do is to authorize an amendment to your current ambulance contract with Pafford that allows Pafford to use advanced EMTs for a short period of time. This is not a permanent change. This is a change that is related to the crush at the hospitals that we're seeing right now. And this change that lets them use advanced EMTs instead of or in addition to paramedics and still be in compliance with your agreement will terminate at the earlier of December 31st of this year or whenever this board indicates that the crisis is over, whichever first occurs.
I'm good. I'd rather someone come in that capacity than no one come.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm good.
Okay, good. On item O, we have, if y'all remember, we had individuals who are associated with the Cleary Fire Department come and ask us to consider allowing them to expand their district, the taxing district for Cleary Fire Department. This is because they're going to have the ability to serve a much larger population with a secondary fire station in place, and their district needs to be expanded to account for the fact that they're covering more territory. And so item O is simply a part of the process that allows Cleary to expand its taxing district, which has to come through the board to do. And we have deadlines on a public hearing that if we... It would be really helpful if... And we would meet our deadlines if we can go ahead and get this done today. All you're doing is acknowledging that a petition has come to you and that has been cleared by the Circuit Clerk and that we need to run a notice in the newspaper for a date certain to have a public hearing. And that'll be on March 15th at nine o'clock. That's all you're doing.
No cost to us.
No cost to the county.
All right, I'm good.
All right. The... So that would be item M, item O, and item Q under my section. M-O-Q. And what we're going to do is we're going to leave...
Well, let me ask you that. Is any of these others something that need to be done to help expedite anything or mean anything?
No, sir.
No? Okay.
No, sir. The other two items, we can take up on the work session, Jared.
Okay. All right.
So you'll be approving item M, item O, and item Q under my section, and that'll take care of everything I need today.
I'll make a motion to approve M, O, and Q.
All right. Motion by Brad to approve these three items.
Second.
Second by Daniel. Any discussion? Any more discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Keith, is anything under you that needs to be covered? I noticed this audit report.
Yes, sir. That can wait until the 25th.
It can, okay.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Well, we would like to go ahead and... We have an outstanding bill with Waste Management. We had planned on having a Waste Management representative here today to discuss, but we have an outstanding bill that reflected an increase in the change of billing households for January. It was an increase of 1,258 households, and that's... Increase has not been approved by the board. So we're holding that statement until the board acts upon it.
Well, let me ask you... Let me ask that. Is that... Are we thinking tentatively we're going to try to recess and meet?
We're just going to go... We're going to recess to the work session if we can get everything done like we want it today.
Okay.
There's no reason for us to...
Okay.
...meet in between recess and work.
Well, one question is I... And I think everybody would have these questions. These additional households that we've been billed for, how many of those... And I know this is the question. How many of those are we not being... Are we not billing? And I think that's got to come from our department, and so I wonder what's to hold up with that in our department as far as lamps and them and whatever, however they are doing it. But that's my question. This is all good. If we can turn around and start billing it, find out some of the slip through the cracks.
Yes, sir. And that is a process right now with Waste Management. We furnished them with a file of our billing history.
When? Recently?
Last week.
Okay, good.
And they are monitoring their stops. Of course, they're supposed to start this week. They've been off the last couple of days.
Yeah.
And... But what they're going to do is take our information and compare it to where they're actually stopping along their routes and providing us a feedback of addresses that are not reflecting... Reflected on our billing records.
Well, that's the way I understood it, but I didn't know they had already started that... Well, or trying to start.
We have provided them the information.
Okay. Because that was the last I heard that we didn't have... They didn't have something from us, which I can see how the two need to work together.
And the increase here is completely reflected upon... There's been no change in the number of house tops billed by Waste Management since the inception of this agreement. So this is a reflection of the number of building permits that have been issued by the county.
New homes.
New homes.
Okay.
Since 2018.
I got you.
So there again, we don't have definite proof that these are being billed, but there was a building permit. They should be on our billing record as far as notice given that there's something going on at that address. They've been given an address. And these addresses are already on our billing records. Now, they could be in a suspended status, waiting to get the clear that the house is finished and being lived.
Okay.
But we're confident this number is acceptable.
Okay.
Steve, Jay, do y'all have any questions about that?
No. I do, but it can wait.
What?
Jay has questions, but it can wait.
Okay, so we're going to take this up today?
It's up to y'all. Y'all want to take it up today or wait till the 25th?
Well, we're about to enter contract anyway, right?
Yes, sir.
For all?
That's correct. You'll be talking about an RFP within the next 60 days.
Yeah. I'm good.
We'd like to go ahead and...
Okay. I mean, I think this sounds legit. I just want to make sure if we're getting... We're billing all these that are on here, that we are.
If y'all are good with it, this will allow us to go on and take care of the bill, and we can start looking forward to how we're going to handle the RFP.
Yeah, we can discuss all this when we get ready to do that.
Okay.
Okay. All right. All right. So you want me to... You want to go ahead and cover that, Keith?
Yes, sir.
Make a... All right. Do I have a motion to approve this... I don't know how you want to call it.
Just the increase in the house count being billed by Waste Management.
This would be item...
This would be item E.
Under Keith's section.
Yeah. All right. All right. Do I have a motion to approve item E under Waste Management?
I'll make a motion to approve item E.
Okay. Motion by Brad.
Second.
Second by Daniel. Any more discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Gentlemen, this will be... I promise this will be the last item. I better be careful. This is believed to be the last item that I'm going to talk about this morning. Under Mike's section, which is Section 8 of the agenda, Mike Harrison. Item H is an AT&amp;T permit. I believe that this... Does this go back, Mike, to before we got everything resolved?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is just... This is one additional permit that was a part of a package of permits that came in while we were wrestling with AT&amp;T, and we need to go ahead and turn this one loose. This is construct a fiber optic cable across Scenic Drive between Oak and Arrowhead Trail and following the roads that are listed there that go into, I believe, Arrowhead Trail there.
That's not in District 3, right?
That's in District Two.
Two.
Uh, and so if you guys would favor us with approving item H under Mike Harrison's section, approving that, the release of that one permit.
Do I have a motion to approve this?
With great pain in my heart, I make the motion to approve.
Alright, motion approved by Cross, seconded by,
Second, Steve.
Steve.
Seconded by Steve.
Way to go, Steve.
Is any more discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed?
Gentlemen, thank y'all very much.
Hey, hey, let me, let me add one thing while I got, uh, there's two things I wanna say while I got everybody on the phone. One thing I wanna talk about on the twenty-fifth, whenever our next board meeting is, so everybody can be thinking about it. Cause I spoke to these guys and I told them I'd bring it up today, but everyone's not here, so we're not able to talk about it. Um, but it's gonna be those truck routes, those truck road, truck routes on county roads. We need to have that discussion on the twenty-fifth as far as what we're considering truck routes and what are not truck routes. Um, obviously just a pretty good, uh, problem that's existing in District Two. So I know I wanna talk about that on the twenty-fifth, on what we define as no truck routes and how that works. And my, I'm of the opinion, I'll just tell you my opinion now, no truck route should only be in platted subdivisions. That's kinda my take of the whole thing. But these other roads that we have in the county that are considered no truck roads, we're not enforcing them the same. So, either we're gonna enforce them all, in my opinion, or none. So I know it's very hard to enforce, uh, the no truck routes in the county, but, uh, in platted subdivisions, it's, it's critical that we have certain truck routes that we want them to go into. Obviously, I know in subdivisions, there's, sometimes there's only one way to get to a road, and you gotta go down that road. I understand that. But I'm talking about all the other outside of platted subdivision, the no truck routes that are in the county. I wanna have that for discussion on the twenty-fifth. Um, and then the second thing I wanted to mention was, whether we got Word in here and Harrison, is there anything they need as far as the emergency that's going on right now that needs to be dealt with? Or you've got all that covered on that emergency declaration?
Y'all covered, y'all covered what needed to be covered. Um, it, the, the logistical part of that is, we, we need a PO, and I think what Bridget typically does is she has standing POs that are, I, I, I don't know exactly how she does that, but nonetheless, let's just make sure that before we get an invoice, everybody hearing me say that? Before we get an invoice, we got a purchase order that has been issued. Even if it's sitting on the corner of Bridget's desk or the corner of Keith's desk, there's a PO that's been issued that's got a date on it that will predate whatever the date of the invoice is that we ultimately get for it. But we don't have to worry about bid law, we don't have to worry about two quotes, we don't have to worry about any of that stuff. We just gotta make sure we got a PO.
Okay.
That's it.
Alright.
Y'all are covered through the twenty-fifth on your emergency declaration, by the way.
Sounds good. Alright, anything else?
Do you want, let Mike and him give an update?
They want to, whatever y'all do with that, do it twenty-fifth. Y'all wanna give an update or anything? Have y'all got anything? And we know, we kinda know what's out there.
We got enough material to hold us probably today into tomorrow as far as de-ice and stuff, and we'll probably be out sometime tomorrow. Uh,
Yeah.
I don't know what wind is going to tail for us right now. And really don't know where we can get our hands on. Last I got was out of Lake Charles, so.
What'd you get out of Lake Charles?
Calms and chloride. So.
Y'all a lot of sand out of Crystal Springs, didn't you?
Got a lot of sand.
They got y'all straightened out on the truck route there?
Yeah.
I got a phone call. But then I got a nice phone call that said, I said, it's really funny y'all are calling me about truck route. We understand completely. Trust me. And I said, and they were super nice, uh, said, well, our, um, our load, the, we've contacted the pit loader or whatever, and he will show them the way out. I said, I laughed at it. I said, I cannot believe we're hearing this because, and they said, it's probably the GPS doing it. I said, probably so, you know, they were super nice about it. But yeah, well, make sure, I, I think that was a funny call, us truck routes.
But, uh, you know, right now, everything's completely progressed up. We got my crew, the sheriff's department, and the EOC split up in different groups in every district. We're trying to unthaw today, uh, what we can. We're, we're just kinda rationing our material out, cause we figured we'll have this to deal with tomorrow. Could be in the Wednesday, so.
Hmm.
I don't know where, we got a lot of people.
Tomorrow is Wednesday.
They know we got, they know we got a little material. We got a lot of people calling, wanting material. Uh, but I'm trying to hold tight to what I got.
I've traveled all around. I mean, it's, it is what it is. I mean, but it's, you know, you can get through there. But common sense will get you through there. You don't need to be out there if you don't have something you can get to there with. Yeah.
We're trying to get some stuff in today, some equip, different, a little more equipment and stuff, trying to start scraping some roads. Trying to get, we're working on the bridges in the bad areas.
Right.
Kinda impossible just to get up and down a hill or something like that right now.
Thank goodness we don't have a stack.
Hey Keith, do you have any plans on, I mean, the reason, only reason I'm bringing this up is cause we'll have a lot of the judges and everybody calling, starting this afternoon on tomorrow's plan for county offices. I know it's hard to predict at nine-thirty, but I don't see a lot of this melting down.
I don't think it's gonna melt.
I don't either.
I think you're dealing with this the rest of the week.
I just think maybe sometimes after noon, Keith, if you can put out something to them, whether you, what you're gonna do on county offices, I mean, as far as the, hate to use the word non-essential.
Was it supposed to be in the forties, in the forties late tomorrow, maybe?
Maybe.
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna do anything till closer to Friday.
Would y'all, would you entertain making a call now to say, want, uh, come in at one? Something like that?
Or maybe just.
I don't know what the roads will be like.
Well, I, I guess my thing, I, I would be good at saying, everybody plan to stay home until you hear from Keith at one o'clock tomorrow. And that way you can make a decision on what happens today and whatever happens.
What, what about, well?
Delay, a delayed, for sure a delayed entry in the morning, because you know it's not getting above freezing. But, and then wait to hear from you tomorrow by noon on the rest of the day. What's your thoughts, Keith?
What are they saying Thursday?
High's thirty-five.
So on Wednesday, the high's forty-one, the low's thirty-three. Right now they have freezing rain. Thursday, the high's thirty-four, the low's twenty-two, sixty percent chance frozen mix. Friday, the high's thirty-two, the low's eighteen. Saturday's gonna be forty-four, Sunday fifty-three.
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna do anything this week.
It's gonna be hard.
I may get the temperature up in the daytime, but it's not gonna be enough to take care of it.
And it's not gonna be up there long enough. It's two inches solid.
Man, all, all my, down our way.
Only thing, only thing to help us out if we miss that Wednesday night, Jared, and we get rain on us and not, it not freeze up, it can, it can unlock us, but right now.
The problem is, you, you still not getting it warm enough like what the sheriff said. Thursday, 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 well, Thursday and Friday, you're barely above freezing, so.
But I'm, I'm trying, I'm gonna get on the horn after this and try to get some more resources.
My thought, Keith, my thought Keith would be, every day at one o'clock, you make an assessment.
Because we're gonna be out.
Shut them down for the half a day, half a day, just.
Think about it, when you do that, they have to, I mean, they have to sit there on ready, wondering if we're gonna run in at one. Although they're not doing anything else. They're not out traveling around.
Jared, Jared, this is Steve, and I totally agree with you. I've worked in the government for nearly thirty years, and we had this type of stuff to where you'd sit around waiting for a phone call. And most of the time, they would call, and, and we're gonna be closed the rest of the day, and hey, you've been sitting there dressed, ready to go. But then, the times that they say, yep, show up at two o'clock, by the time you get there and everybody tells their stories about getting there, it's time to go back home.
Hmm.
And you got double, you know, you got double traffic on the roads. Uh, I think like, like Daniel says, the day after lunch, unless we find out something that's way different, I would say that we're closed all day tomorrow. Uh, I, I just don't think it's fair for the employees, uh, or the people to say we're gonna make that decision again at one o'clock. And tomorrow at one o'clock, I would make the decision for Thursday. Uh, but unless you can get them in there at, at the lunch, at ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, uh, it's not good to have them come in after lunch.
I, I agree.
Productivity is zero, and you got double traffic on the road.
I, I agree, Steve. If you're not gonna do it starting in the morning, I just don't see coming in for three hours in the evening.
Yeah, and, and my thing was, at one o'clock, you make the decision about the following day.
That's, that's the way I understood it too.
Okay.
They give you the whole day.
Alright.
I think we all in agreement with that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Anything else you wanna talk about?
How much y'all know that, uh,
Huh?
I wanna just bring up real quick that, uh, we got two citizens really stepped up and helped us, so Hayes, Patrick, uh,
Wilson.
Yeah, Wilson Buffington.
Bart Hudson.
And Randy Martin. Yeah, Randy Martin. Yeah, they really helped us out, especially keeping that interstate open, cause like, uh, cause it was, it was stayed jammed up late too, and Randy and Randy finally made, come up there, they have Mike's three years, and forced any one of the planes, and really kept the, the traffic, it kept running through. I'll be honest, guys, we're lucky we're in Rankin County. We got a lot of good citizens that's helped us out through this right here. It's made it a lot easier for us.
Yeah.
All across the board, getting up, getting this material in and stuff like that. And we're gonna try to, we're gonna try to find some more material to keep going the rest of the week. I just don't know what's gonna be the status of getting it in here.
Yeah, alright. That's perfect. We, uh, we always seem to join together well in Rankin County and, uh, try to take care of, I, what I, I appreciate is how many people try to help themselves. And, uh, in, in a crisis like this, they help themselves, use a lot of common sense, and they don't just sit there expecting somebody to be there to, to do it for them. So, anyway, that's, uh, kudos for Rankin County. Alright, have anything else? Uh, I have a motion to recess till, uh, February twenty-fifth?
Yeah, so moved.
Alright, a motion by Daniel, seconded by Brad to recess February twenty-fifth at, uh, nine o'clock. Okay, uh, everybody, have all approved? Any nays? Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, thanks.